I'm gonna call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have one of the bills all been signed by everyone?
Yes.
Okay, approve of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor? A minute of last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the July thirtieth meeting. Second?
All in favor? Okay. Town administrator weekly update.
Hi, just one item for you today and that is the sheriff's department log from July. First, the total hours of Sam Morton's cruiser was outside of Acton Chapel. Does anybody remember what we've been trending?
About four hours.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven point five.
Almost a whole week.
Yes. Alright, summary of events, July first, Deputy Jones stopped a vehicle in Acton. The driver, forty-eight of Rochester, was summoned for driving without a license and the passenger was arrested on a warrant. The vehicle was towed.
When you're ready to take a break, I might ask a question. About those hours.
One more question about that.
Yeah, I, I think it's appropriate to open up a discussion with the sheriff about these hours and a little cost sharing on the cost of this vehicle.
I thought we were gonna get credit for these hours for so many hours.
There was nothing mentioned by the credit.
I, you know, if it's, you know, we gotta take a look.
At first it was down here and then just.
You have to be creepy.
A month has a hundred and twenty. So, they're, they're using it ten to fifteen percent of the time. So they had to pay ten or fifteen percent of the purchase price.
Okay, so would you like to?
How do you feel about that?
Definitely.
Well, I mean, you should be able to figure out the amount of hours you got figured on the vehicle. You have an idea of fuel and everything else. There should be some sort of give back here.
I assume we're not paying for the fuel, are we?
Um, yeah, part of, part, yes. Part of the, uh.
I mean, we're.
Well, well, let me, let me rephrase it. So, part of the.
For the car truck, it shows.
X amount for fuel, right. So we don't know, it's just like it's got X amount for uniform. We don't know if they're utilizing that new uniform every year or if they're utilizing the full, you know, cell phone service. We're not seeing those bills. Well, David's right. There's X amount for fuel. Is that thirty-seven part of it? Are they spending more than that amount? Are they spending that full amount on our town at all? And we don't know. It's just, it was a budget line.
That's probably just a standard percentage that they apply to everyone.
It tells us a full work week.
Yeah, yeah, I suppose.
Some that is.
I think it's wise to do this before we buy a vehicle, if it gets approved. I think it's wise to have this negotiation with the sheriff before we.
So remember, we voted on the, the car already. So the car and the sheriff has been approved. Whether or not you actually buy it, I guess, you know.
Yes.
Nothing says you have to. The voters approved it.
Thank you, thank you for reminding me of that.
But it's still a good conversation to have the sheriff for the amount of hours.
Yeah, I mean, the twelve to fifteen he's been doing, that's easy.
One overtime shift.
Yeah, thirty-seven.
Is it the amount of hours or the mileage that counts?
Well, see, on, on a cop car, it's the hours, cause they sit there.
Sitting idle.
Idle.
So what would you the board like to do? We agree that you wanna have a conversation about it? We're looking to bring him in. We're looking to have one select board member, myself, speak with him.
Well, I mean, this is also not just our issue. This is a Chapel issue too. It's not, they, you know, before we jump into this, we want to see what they, if they have any thoughts on this too, I would think. It's not just our car, but.
It's worth a talk.
Okay.
But I mean, if these numbers keep trending like this, it's not gonna look very good on our part. I mean, obviously, we, I don't wanna think that just because it got voted in, that now that's saying we can do whatever we want. Okay, that's what it feels like.
And remember, there was a good portion, although the articles passed, you know, there was still a large amount of people that voted against it. So those people are certainly watching and hearing these kind of things.
If we did this.
They what?
If we tried to get some reimbursement or out of town use, so.
Let me find out where Shapford stands and I'll bring it back to you next week and make a plan.
I don't mind sitting down with you again.
Appreciate your talk.
Alright, so on July second, Deputy Carr responded to a prowler complaint at a home on Samborn Road. After investigation, it was found that a nineteen-year-old male from New Hampshire had gone on the property because he saw a dog that he wanted to pet. He was told he could not go onto the property without permission. However, he failed to see what was wrong with it. On the fifth of July, a sergeant responded to a well-being check on a property of Weaver's Marina on Twenty-first Street. There was a male lying on the rock wall of the property. Property owner was able to wake him and the male said he was okay. He was still there when the sheriff showed up, heavily intoxicated. He complained of pain and requested an ambulance, so he was transported. July eighth, Deputy Carr placed a thirty-five-year-old female from Acton into protective custody after making suicidal statements. She became very compatible and was eventually transported to Sanford. July sixteenth, deputies responded to a home on Totty Road in Chapel for a suicide. Chapel Rescue arrived prior to their arrival and confirmed the subject was deceased. July twentieth, Deputy Samborn and Sergeant Chavette mediated a domestic violence incident at a home on Fox's Ridge Road in Acton. On seven twenty-one, Deputy Shannard was dispatched to a home on Village Circle in Chapel for a missing juvenile. Father woke up, found his twelve-year-old autistic son missing. Short time later, he was located at the neighbor's, um, was located at his neighbor's. Returned with that. July twenty-first, deputy responded to a home on Hopper Road in Acton for a crisis incident. Subject reported her eighteen-year-old daughter was in crisis. The daughter had an active felony warrant from New Hampshire. She was charged with domestic violence, criminal threatening, resisting arrest, criminal mischief, unlawful possession of intoxicants. And she was transported to crisis evaluation prior to jail. July twenty-sixth, deputies responded to a reported mental health call. Security at Iron Tales reported a male who was intoxicated, was threatening to kill himself with a gun he had in his saddlebag. No gun was ever displayed. Investigation revealed it was more of a disturbance as there was insufficient evidence for protective custody. The sixty-three-year-old male from Epsom, New Hampshire was intoxicated, preparing to ride his motorcycle home. Bystanders intervened and stopped him from driving. He shoved and threatened people before walking away from the scene. He was located nearby, not possessing any gun. He was still belligerent and arrested for disorderly conduct. And July twenty-eighth, follow-up on the old case, a forty-six-year-old from Bedford was charged with theft by deception for an incident earlier this summer with his sold camper to a Chapel resident that was not his to sell. And seven twenty-eight, deputy investigated a complaint that occurred on, at Horn Pond Boat Lodge. The thirty-seven-year-old female from Acton was arrested for aggravated domestic violence assault as it was alleged she struck a male with her vehicle at the boat lodge. That is Acton. And I do wanna ask the board, and I think I've mentioned this more than once, when we read these, you know I take the names out even though they're printed, a few towns, apparently all towns get these. And another town, couple of towns in North County just post them as is. And I was asked by someone last week why we don't read the names and I just said out of, you know, respect. I mean, you never know what's going on in someone's life. I mean, it is public if they ask, but do you want the names?
Honestly, I mean, there's been people in this audience that, family members that come over there and it can be discomfort to them also, so.
And they're recent, it's up for review.
I think more or less what we, the only thing we really need to hear about is actually what the crimes are.
Okay.
Persecute people, I mean, you know.
You know, with all of the discussion we've had about the ambulance and fire department and, I would love to get a monthly report on ambulance calls, fire calls, use of the fire truck, use of the ambulance. I'm not quite sure what that should look like. I, I don't think we wanna get individuals' health information. But, but to get some sense on a going-forward basis of exactly how those vehicles are being used, especially with us, six hundred fifty thousand, ambulance possibly.
It's similar to the request, similar to the request we made to the code office. Monthly starting next week, he's gonna start giving you a list of, you know, violations outstandingself and hacking about.
And it's only gonna help every department that does this.
Yep.
To see what's going on.
Yeah, because I mean, it, it, it's gonna give, especially when it comes to the budget and season. We're gonna have all this information, all these calls. I mean, honestly, I don't wanna see the names of people picked up and out. You can blurt those out. Just a call for a rescue here, whatever, fire there, whatever. And I think it's just good, good housekeeping.
I think we've, we've talked about this before and I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'd like to make a motion now that the board authorize or record or asks the fire chief to provide this information. So I'll make a motion that the town administrator approached the fire chief to get monthly reports on ambulance and fire department, fire apparatus calls and mileage. It would be great for him to sort of give his thoughts about how to do this, but we want enough information so we can understand what's going on. I know that's a long motion. I just want a sentiment by the board expressed in a vote so that Jennifer can then take that back.
Hold on a second. All in favor? Anything else?
No, sir.
Next, we're gonna go on to least an update, starting with Ed.
Sure. Quick and easy. I don't have any.
Okay.
School departments haven't really fired up their meetings yet. They've had one that was quick and easy. Lincoln School, I don't have anything. And transfer station is just chugging ahead. We have something later on about the transfer station.
Next, we have John.
I'm gonna go along with Ed and say I really don't have anything either. Mary Grant will be meeting on the twenty-third at ten o'clock for their monthly meeting. That's Mary Grant.
Tom.
Jennifer Lauren and I met today with Mark Roy, our accountant, upside accountant.
Tax rate's on the agenda.
Oh, okay. I'll defer that item until a future agenda item, so other than that, I have nothing to report.
I don't really have anything to report, other than I, what I'm gonna be doing is I'm gonna be speaking with Grant and see what their intentions are on their project and how, whether or not, whether they think they're gonna be finishing up. So I'm gonna call Amanda to make sure that, you know, that field gets opened up there pretty shortly 'cause I'm sure we'll have soccer, so.
She's doing sound.
Yeah, so I will be meeting with them hopefully beginning of next week.
That, that area back there where they're, they've done all the fill and they're using that, what's the final state of that gonna look like?
So what, what, what we talked about them doing, I gave, we gave them the, you know, the layout, the computer schematics, whatever you wanna call it. And what they're supposed to be doing is bringing that up to some grade for us.
And so it's just gonna be, excuse me, dirt?
Dirt.
Just gravel.
As far as I know, they've already put the erosion control up. They're supposed to be bringing the grade up to some grade. And they got the entrance into.
How, how are we gonna use that parcel, that area?
That, that area's supposed to be parking.
Supposed to be parking. Given that they have so much in Millings that they're taking out of there, do you think we would be appropriate and they would provide a code of Millings on that?
Well, I'm gonna have to do it. I'm gonna try to give them anything.
Good.
When, when, when they leave, I want it, I want it somewhat of a parking lot.
Yeah.
And that's what we talked, that's what we were kind of aiming for.
Okay.
We allowed them to use this over here, you know, we actually allowed them to use the other piece that we really didn't discuss using, the upper parking lot of the, they've been using that also, so.
I didn't even see.
Yeah, I know there was some stuff.
Oh, yeah, they've had terrible holes there. They called me one day, wanted to dump some rap in there, you know, Ryanins and stuff. So they told me that they were gonna spread some of those out. They said, well, if we dump, we'll spread them out, it's great 'cause it needs gravel anyways. But, so my intentions are is trying to get them to, we, I don't expect a finished product, but I want it. I want it so we can use it.
Yeah, I mean, we really need it and the busiest time for the rec is coming up with soccer. And I want to push them on. Parking lot doesn't hold everybody.
They're, they're, I think they're ahead of schedule from all looks of it. You were talking about October. So they, you know, they, so like I said, I'm gonna be meeting with them next week and I'll, I'll get some more details for you and make sure that we're still on the same page.
I do just wanna take a moment to thank you for that. I know that you have done a lot of negotiating to get them to do that. They had, they didn't have to, but I know you worked really hard to kind of a tip for tat, kind of get a, you know, we'll let you use the space if you kind of support yourself. Like, thank you for all that work that you did.
Yeah, yeah.
Next, I have myself. Last Tuesday, I attended a five-hour planning board and zoning board training for the MMA to learn more about the planning board so that I can be a better support liaison for the committee and our CEO. I know that they are holding a meeting tomorrow night at six PM. For the recreation, as our town administrator has already said, they currently have applications out for the soccer program. I believe the rec director said that their registration is coming in on August seventeenth. You can find a link to the form either on Facebook or as we recommend coming to the town hall to get your form. Practices are expected to begin at the last week of August and the rec directors already done a good job reaching out and starting scheduling with numerous towns. The rec directors also mentioned that they have met with numerous individuals who are interested in joining the rec committee, but if you have spoken with the rec director, you still need to reach out to the town administrator to set up an interview so we can just make, you know, we do it with every committee so you can meet with the town administrator liaison and get you appointed. So if you met with the rec director, please still reach out to the town administrator. If you're interested in joining the committee, please reach out to the rec director. The Nelson Dam Coalition, we have been trying to schedule a meeting to talk about some potentially hazardous trees in removal, but we are kind of reliant on the Sanford City, their schedules. We have middle schedule that we're hoping for this week or next week to get that confirmed. And two weeks ago, I did meet with the candidate for the Mary Grant Committee, which we appointed them last week. And that is my update. And then next, we will move on to department head and committee chair updates.
I'll stick with Ann Morton Finance Chair. We had a meeting last Thursday related on the upcoming warrants for the referendum vote. And just briefly, the ambulance purchase was a vote of six to zero in favor. The command vehicle was a vote of four to two. The municipal car was a vote of one to five. So the committee was thinking of not doing that. And the last one was the snow plowing and that was six to zero in favor. I also do want to make a correction to a statement I made at the Warren Finance meeting. I had said that I had, that I had done a calculation that the tax, the taxes increased from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four approximately twenty-two percent. I have since discovered that those figures were preliminary figures that I had been, I based that calculation from. So that was an actual incorrect statement. And I believe that the tax rate actually went down, so I just wanted to make that correction.
How much do you come up going down?
I haven't done that. I have to.
I mean, well, you put out there that way up, so I'd like to see the number. I like the other number I went down.
As, as soon as I do that, the actual calculation, I can, I'll update you on it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I think that's it. Thank you.
I have a question for you. So on the command vehicle, you said it was a four-two vote?
It was a four-two, yes.
Okay. Do you recollect what the reason why these individuals voted against? Just, I, I didn't see that part of the meeting. Do you remember?
The consensus of the, of the two individuals, and I was one of them, was that everyone kept talking about it being a, they wanted it for the radios, which to me is a communication problem, not a vehicle problem.
Well, yeah, you know, I, I could see why you do, you do that, 'cause I think what we found was the campaigning on it was more about radios than the vehicle.
Right, right.
Which would really didn't help the situation, but that was the only reason?
That, that was my, and, and, and I feel that, I mean, personally, we have a utility truck that we purchased not too many years ago and, I don't know.
And now the municipality rig was a one-five?
Yes.
Okay. What was the, the main reason that was the concern? Do you recollect that?
The main reason was I didn't felt it was necessary with the reimbursement that we've been doing for the past few years. We were averaging, just the past two years, about just over four thousand in mileage reimbursement for the two individuals who would be using the vehicle. And, and the committee just didn't feel that that was justified.
Good. I just, I just figured we'd ask some questions. Maybe the people at home weren't quite sure what was going on, so. Okay, thank you.
I think if anyone has any questions, like those meetings are recorded as well. They can always watch those as well.
I just wanted some clarification myself.
So next, we are gonna move, is there any other department heads or committee chair updates? Next, we'll move into old business, which has us going to the Warren Finance Press for Internal Information Policy. This is something that we talked about two weeks ago, a couple weeks ago.
So in front of you, you have a draft, so some changes that were made. So the first one, any member of the Warren Finance may make a request for information within the scope of the committee and any department in town to the Warren Finance Committee Chair if the committee majority votes on said request and the vote passes. That was the change. You guys wanted, in the past, you waived that, so now, based on what you said in the last meeting, you wanted to see a vote. And then in parentheses, if outside the scope, an individual may file visually for a Freedom of Information request. Number two did not change. The chair of the Warren Finance Committee shall then contact the town administrator and, I'm sorry, did change, because we fixed the words at the end. Shall contact the town administrator and share the majority vote request. The town administrator will immediately begin working on the request and does not need to wait for a selection approval. Once the information is gathered, the town administrator will email all information requested to the entire Warren Finance Committee, select board, and any department head that information pertains to. If a Warren Finance Committee member prefers to have a hard copy of the information, he or she can make a blanket request at the beginning of their term and the town administrator will have their documents mailed to them. Select board encourage communication between the Warren Finance, their liaisons, and the various department heads and committee chairs within the town. This policy is intended to ensure all information or documents requested from any town department or committee are distributed to all members of the Warren Finance. It is not intended to prohibit communications. In an effort to maintain transparency and abide by the Freedom of Information laws, meetings with department heads or committee chairs shall be held at a properly posted select board meeting where all members of the Warren Finance are afforded the right to attend.
I think those changes sound great and I think this whole thing is to, as it's seen here, to kind of, what's the word? I can't think of the word. Make communication a little bit more clear.
And what it also does, I think it puts a direction where we wanna make sure that everybody on the committee is involved in, in all the decisions. And I think this does that.
Yep. I think it's important for any committee to remember that they're acting as a body, not as an individual, to make sure that anything that is requested or asked is the body as a whole. So I think that's what this does. So, do you want, if anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
I would, I would just ask.
Put in the poll, please.
Good question. Jennifer, would you please reread what you just said, just, just to hear it again?
The full?
The, the last, the last.
Just the last paragraph?
Yeah, so it encourages that part.
Yep, yep.
The select board encourages communications between the Warren Finance, their liaisons, and the various department heads and committee chairs within the town. This policy is intended to ensure all information or documents requested from any town department or committee are distributed to all members of the Warren Finance. It is not intended to prohibit communications. In an effort to maintain transparency and abide by the Freedom of Information laws, meetings with department heads or committee chairs shall be held at a properly posted select board meeting where all members of the Warren Finance are afforded the right to attend.
Thank you, Mary Hutch.
Any other?
There, there was a motion made and passed at the last Warren Finance meeting to be allowed to have whoever wanted to ask for information to contact the chair of the, of the committee and then the chair would hold the committee to see if that was something that the majority wanted to do and then contact the town administrator and then vote would be, would happen at the, the next subsequent meeting. Reason being is to expedite information coming forward and with the chair asking for it, I mean, there would, there'd only be one person, you know, requesting the information.
I think my only concern with that is it feels like you're putting the cart before the horse where you're asking for information before we see an official vote. And I think part of this policy is to make sure that every member of that committee, or majority of the members of that committee are in favor of that. So that's, I guess that would be my concern with that.
My concern would be is if, now I made a remark during the meeting that we're making decisions outside of the meeting. If we were to email or FaceTime each other or do whatever outside of a meeting and make a decision like that, would that be wrong? Yep.
Wrong, yeah, probably, yeah.
Okay. So if you do it, it'd be all right? Absolutely not. So probably not a good idea.
You wanna try to take that back and talk to your committee about it?
I'll take that back.
Whatever you will take, it's free to make.
Yeah, so, I mean, your, your point's taken, David. I mean, and, you know, that's.
Well, 'cause I know they'd be hunting for it, you know. So, I mean, and the individual who made the motion knows that, so.
David, your good point. Well done.
Your, your point is well taken and I'll take it back to the committee and see if they wanted to.
Did that come up when the motion was made? Because there's a lot of smart people in that committee. Somebody must have known.
It's supposed to be all smart.
Well, no, I don't mean all like that. I mean, there, there are, they are a smart group of individuals, all of them. I mean, I, I'm surprised that nobody said that.
I'm sorry, go ahead. There was something else about one of the members, and I don't know if it made it into the motion, said that all requests should be documented in a Freedom of Information request form. Did I get that right? And did that make it into your vote?
I don't believe it did.
Okay, fine.
What would it do?
Well, you know how we're saying if it's within the scope of the committee, they can vote and ask for it. If it's outside of the scope, we're saying, put it in a Freedom of Information request form. And what this individual said, just do everything in a Freedom of Information request form, which I guess they're, they can do, but it seems unnecessary.
Yeah, that's very unnecessary.
It just, you know.
It slows down the process.
That did not make it into the vote, you don't think?
I don't believe it did, but I, I'll, I'll go back.
As a, as a chair, I think maybe, I'm not telling you how to do your job, but I would try to simplify the process instead of making it harder. And that would make it harder.
Okay, thank you, David. Alright, so do we wanna, you want a motion to adopt?
Yeah, I make a motion to adopt the Warren Finance request for internal information policy. As read.
As read. Second, all in favor?
So someone wanna pass the master round?
I got it.
Which one's the master?
Well, they're all the same.
Just make sure, Tom, hand it to Jennifer.
I'll make sure of it.
Oh.
Sometimes you get something in a place that.
If that's the only. I don't, I don't get to pull fun of him often, so I'll take that. Next, we are moving into new business, which we will start with the tax rate discussion.
Want me to kick it off?
You want to man.
Okay, great. As I started to say earlier, our treasurer and our town administrator and I met this morning with Mark Roy, who's our accountant, upside accountant, and Dennis.
Barube.
Barube, who is a principal of our appraisal firm that's been working with the town for a number of years. Is that right, Dennis?
I'd say a good twenty.
A good twenty years. And we had gone over a, the calculation for the upcoming year tax rate. A good twenty years, and we had gone over a, uh, the calculation for the upcoming year tax rate. And, um, I thought it was a great discussion, it was very smooth. Uh, the, the, the expense budget is basically a representation of the warrants that were approved in the spring. The significant variables are the new valuation, which has now been closed, correct?
This, this top number is?
That's it, there are no more changes, from what I understand. So that's final, and that will be reported to the state, and that's basically what we always do. And, um, and then the revenue budgets. And Jennifer and I and Lauren have reviewed the revenue budgets with Mark and, um, have, have finalized those, and I will say, in a number of cases, we up them. We were mindful to the fact that, um, in prior years, the actual revenues had exceeded the revenue budget by some amount of money, a sizable amount. So, we really tried to be a little more aggressive in terms of raising those revenue budgets. Having said that, I think they're, they're likely to be realized. I don't think we've got a lot of risk in there.
Fair statement. Fair, yeah.
So we take the revenues, we take the valuation, we take the expense budget, we take the information from the school on theirs, and we put that all into this formula, and it tells us, uh, basically what the tax rate would be. Uh, Jennifer had, uh, when we met with them, we went through a number of scenarios. Because it's a play between how much reserve you use, you have. Uh, that's basically the, the, the one variable, and looking at what the tax rate might be, depending on how much of our reserves we took down. Now, uh, when we did that, we were also mindful of the fact that, um, we had a certain reserve balance at the end of the year, June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, and that was what, two point two million?
Two point four.
Two point four million dollars. Now, you gotta keep in mind that we just spent, or we are possibly going to spend, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Huh?
Seven eighty.
Seven eighty, okay, so that will lower our reserves to?
One point six.
One point six million dollars. Now, our reserve policy is to be between, uh, fifteen to twenty-five percent?
Exactly.
And what's that range, Jennifer?
Uh, that was one point five to two point two.
So.
We're right there now.
If we don't spend anything, we'll be a hundred thousand above the minimum
Right.
and significantly below the maximum.
Right.
That's if we spend nothing, from reserves to lower taxes. So, that's sort of a backdrop. Jennifer, you wanna walk us through the scenarios?
So, um, it's excellent explanation that Tom gave, as to really once all of the numbers and we bring all of those, uh, key players into it, because we wanna confirm that all of the numbers, you know, what you're looking at in front of you, one through twelve, are what they are. Do we have the, you know, every single valu- every single, uh, real estate valuation correct? Do we have all the appropriations and the revenues exactly what they should be, and Tom's right, we increased excise revenue, we increased the rescue services, you know, there's some that we correctly increased based on, you know, last year's number. There are others like tree growth that we didn't increase because you just don't know if anybody's gonna ever take tree growth out. So, we really spent a lot of time going through each line, and then we talked about, you know, we chuckled because we talked about the marriage fee lines, and it was fifteen hundred dollars, and we spent the time to look at it, you know, as little as it was, so we spent a lot of time on that, so. Um, so essentially, our revenues before anything, um, is added to it are two point three nine two nine five oh. And, uh, I do have, um, a couple of copies, if anybody in the audience wants to look at it, we're all enjoys, um, a couple there if you want, but, so, using just the revenues that we went through and calculated, nothing with the unassigned fund balance, keeping an overlay at about eighty thousand dollars, which is half the overlay we had last year. That was one of Tom's key points, that there's, you know, we can cut that overlay in half because we have a good contingency fund that the approvers, um, passed, and also, just having a revaluation, you shouldn't have that many abatements or supplements, um, so.
This, this overlay, from my perspective, uh, had been set at levels above what we thought rebates, you know, abatements would be, and so it was really like an un, un, uh, an unbooked or un, unbudgeted surplus.
Right.
That, a contingency, if you will, that was built into the revenue budgets.
Right, but it can only be spent on certain things.
The, hmm?
Uh, but it could only be spent on certain things, so it couldn't be, I mean, it's supposed to be by statute for abatements, supplements, taxes.
With the way the accounting on it works, it ends up in, if you don't spend it, it ends up in.
It was a revenue fraud, which we didn't count on, right?
Yeah, it ends up in undesigned reserves, so, um, and I didn't think we needed that much. It was two hundred thousand, two hundred twelve thousand, probably, yeah, and so we tried to keep that below a hundred thousand dollars. This number is derived from the program
Right.
that takes all these inputs, so, uh, it, we just can't zero it out.
No.
The, the program requ- will produce what the overlay number is, so the results are from the program, so, go ahead.
So when you, so when we, when we adjust that revenue number, which is the only one that we can adjust, because everything else, you know, your appropriation, county tax, your useful, uh, revenue sharing, is a set number, so the only number, um, and I have it here on my screen, if everybody, anybody wanted to look at this tax rate calculator, the only line that you can actually manipulate is the revenue line, you can go up or down. And when we manipulate the revenue line, it gives us a range down bottom. You know, based on this amount of revenue, this is your lowest tax rate, this is your highest tax rate, and as you put in the tax rate you want, it produces an overlay. So with that being said, using zero dollars for the unassigned fund balance, based on what Tom, uh, has laid out, giving us an eighty thousand dollar overlay, would give us a tax rate of, uh. We give you a tax rate of seven point three five. So currently, the tax rate, um, we're looking at the second column, currently, the tax rate is seven point zero seven, so if we use no, nothing, we're at seven point three five. The next one is.
Hang, hang on, I just wanna point out, that would be a four percent increase in the tax rate.
Seven point three five?
Seven point three five is a four percent growth in the tax rate. Okay?
Alright, the next column, um, up top, it says, you can see, the first line says, two hundred and fifty unassigned fund balance, tax rate two. So what we've done there is we've taken our revenue and we've added two hundred and fifty from the unassigned fund balance. That gave us an overlay of about eighty seven thousand and a tax rate of seven point one five.
And that's an increase of one point one percent in the tax rate.
Okay. Uh, the third column example is three hundred and fifty thousand from the unassigned fund balance, giving you a ninety thousand dollar overlay, and that's what it would take to keep the tax rate flat, seven point zero seven. The last column is if we use five hundred thousand, which is the amount that you used last year, um, which would bring your unassigned fund balance down to one point one below policy, we give you an eighty two thousand dollar overlay, but it would drop the tax rate to six point nine four.
By one point eight five percent.
That's impressive, Tom, is that right?
One point eight five?
One point eight five.
One of the calculations, so at five o'clock, you know, we had the, the doors open, we had them to the War on Finance, you know, we'd just have roundtable talk, we don't, we don't make any decisions, but Tom, you know, kinda said to me, well, if we know that we're at two point four for unassigned fund balance as of June thirtieth, we know we're gonna spend possibly seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars at the September warrant, that brings us down to one point six, your minimum for your policy is one point five, put a hundred thousand dollars in the tax rate calculator, Jennifer, and see where we end up. So we did that, just did that, um, so that would make your revenues, not the two point three minimum, we made it two point four nine two. And Tom, that would give you a tax rate, we could do a tax rate of seven point two five, and that would leave you an overlay of sixty thousand dollars, which, in my opinion, with your contingency, is more than enough.
That's, that's great, so, seven point two five.
A hundred thousand.
With a hundred thousand.
Seven point two five divided by seven point zero seven. That's a two and a half percent growth rate in the tax rate.
That's still a very impressive tax rate. So that leaves you the possibility of everything passing in September, that leaves you enough of your unassigned fund balance to stay within your policy. We've increased our revenues and we've decreased the municipal budget by at least two and a half percent. Um, so we'll continue to spend that down best we can.
Plus, I, I, we, we're at five o'clock, we're talking, and, uh, one thing also is with this money that we're voting on in September, we're, we're doing it also in designated fund right now?
Yes, good point.
Part of that will actually be taxable next year, 'cause, you know, when the snowplow comes up, we're gonna have to add that sixty some thousand dollars into the tax rate at some point, so, um, you know, my, my thought on this whole deal is, you know, we can't keep it flat. If, if we do that, we're just gonna drain our reserves, and then we're gonna get the bump. You know, uh, I, we've, we've been criticized for having too much money in the bank, this and that, right now, we can see where the money's coming down. We've got a lot of what we had last year, and, and we keep on this trend, you know, uh, we can't, uh, we can't manufacture our tax rate anymore, 'cause that's what we're doing. And I think Tom, Tom is right, a hundred thousand dollars is probably max, 'cause we want, we, we should be manufacturing our tax rate every year, it should be what we spend.
Okay.
It should be zero, you know, and, uh, this is about as close as we've been in a long time to be able to do that, with only raising the tax rate of minimum.
Minimum, yeah, and we did increase the revenues, I mean, and, and next week, and this is something that we're not expecting to set the tax rate tonight, let's sink in, take it home, look it over, everybody from the public, you know, watches it and asks questions. Next week, you know, we can give you that breakdown of revenues, you can see how much we increased your excise tax, that's one of our biggest ones, you know. We looked at the trends, so we are continuing to go up, so we've gotta also bank on the chances, the possibility that you don't hit that number, so.
But, you know.
We wanna be careful with the unassigned fund balance.
Cost of living's three percent, three to four percent, right? If anybody thinks the taxes is gonna raise by at least three, four, four percent every year, you know, I mean, the cost of living.
Well, and that's the.
I think, I think many towns would love to be publishing a three, four percent increase in taxes.
But if we start.
What I'm hearing about there.
Especially if you're, if they approve all seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of items, and, um, you know, the school had an increase, was what?
Ten percent.
Seven, eight, nine, ten percent, somewhere, I mean.
It was three hundred thousand.
Health is, in, you know, increased, so, yeah, they have to, it's, the voters that are passing these articles must know the taxes are gonna go up.
But, you know, but if we, if we figure out a three or four percent increase.
Minimum, yeah.
Minimum increase every year, uh, what I'm worried about is in three or four years, when all the designated money's brought out, and then, next thing you know, you're talking, you know, a dollar, you know, or something like that, you know, that, that's a big deal.
I believe we've run out of undesigned reserves.
Yeah.
We're gonna be down to a minimum threshold level.
One point five.
We've been talking all along about the, the perils of using reserves to reduce your taxes is eventually you'll run out of money and you'll hit a cliff, and you're gonna get a spike in taxes, and you're out of money when you need money for capital purposes, for instance, the ambulance. We wouldn't have had the money for an ambulance, where now we're paying for that, so, uh, and we're waiting for a capital budget. We, uh, we're working on that, right? We know there'll be additional capital items that will come up in our plan for the next five years, and if we're starting out with any, without any money in reserves, well, all of that's gonna end up making its way into the tax rate, and we wanna avoid that. So, I, I think a hundred thousand is a good number, it gets us away from the cliff, and with a two and a half percent increase in the tax rate, I, I feel, I feel pretty good about that. I think we all should, especially given that the school budget went up and the town budget went down. This is the second year in a row the town budget has gone down, and the school budget has gone up. You can go figure out what the increase is, but it's gone up, and it's because of that reduction in the town budget that I think we're able to keep these increases to a minimum level.
And, and what, another thing, I know some people don't, some people don't like our investments, but the more money we take out of that, the less money we're investing, the less money we're making also, you know, it's a trickle down. It's a trickle down.
It's, uh, yeah.
About seven or eight years ago, we did drop the tax rate, and the next two years, we paid dearly for it, with increases. So, I vowed when we did, after seeing that, that I'd never support another drop again, you know, unless we had really good financial information to go, to go on, but.
Yeah, and this, a hundred thousand still leaves you in very good shape, I mean, you're still within your one point six, if something will be a one point five, if something happens, so.
Yeah, I mean, nobody, nobody wants to pay more money in taxes, but.
No.
But everybody wants good services.
Well, I was gonna say, we say that, they're also approving the articles, so, we don't think they're okay with it.
If you, if you figure, say, the school budget went up ten percent, then we're gonna turn around and spend almost eight hundred thousand dollars in goodies, and you're only gonna have, if, say if we went with four percent, a four percent increase after having a ten percent increase on school and then eight hundred thousand dollars, for a new ambulance and all that stuff, I think that was, I mean, that's pretty ridiculous.
I just wanna caution, and I, I know that, that when you say that number of the increase in the school budget, I really don't recall what it was. And it may have been ten, I, I just don't know.
It was three hundred thousand.
It, it was, it was certainly more than five or six, I just don't know where it was, so, uh, don't take that to the bank, anyone, we'll get that number.
Even at five or six, for the sake of conversation, if it's six.
Double inflation.
Yeah, I probably, I probably, I could have misvoted, but the numbers that were thrown around.
Tom was just so nervous, he wasn't.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
Just in case we said it wrong.
So, to, to make sure that, I'm not trying to crap on anybody, Tom, but they, they had to do what they had to do.
Education is very important.
We're doing what we have to do.
The vote is approved, it's.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly, and the same thing with the eight, the seven hundred fifty some thousand we're talking, they're the ones that are gonna prove it.
Yeah.
And, so.
Jennifer, I think you and Lauren did a great job on this.
Thank you, we appreciate.
I appreciate all your efforts.
Expertise.
I wanted to say thank you for, for the time you're sharing, Tom Treasurer, for the work that you've done, Tom, for, for what you've done throughout the year, and
He's been.
Get us in, all of you to get us into this situation, it's a good situation to be in.
I gotta tell you, I, I just wanna say something about Mark Lloyd. You know, I'm, I'm a selectman, I got a couple more years here, and, and obviously, this is an expertise that I have, but, you, you know, I don't know whether I'll be here, how long I'll be here. The fact that you have Mark Lloyd, who is working hand in hand with Jennifer and the Treasurer, and, uh, is reviewing all of these numbers, it adds a level of expertise the town desperately needed, and I'm just very happy with those relationships we have.
They're very happy with that.
And adults.
Yes, it is a good team there.
Can't speak highly enough about them, you know, together, they're, they've been great.
And one more step beyond that, we believe what they say, but we also have a board member that has the expertise, Tom, and you can look at what they say and verify it, and for myself, I greatly appreciate that.
Oh, yes, very much, very much so.
And there's no better way to start your day than to have Tom and Mark and Dennis.
That's where you get extra praise for helping the.
We all think differently, Jennifer.
They are group, yes, very educational.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
So we'll have, um, so I don't hear from anybody, um, you know, I'm gonna print all the tax commitments and print it for seven point two five unless, Mark's gonna proof all the final numbers and.
So this is, we're gonna vote on next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, so that, I think we'll do that discussion for now, and we're gonna move on to B, which is transfer station compactor, we're gonna try to reuse them.
Thank you. So during the whole process of looking at pricing, looking at changing vendors and all that, um, one thing came to light, we kinda knew it, but it showed up more. Every week, we get rid of two MSW containers. MSW stands for municipal solid waste. It's a trash bag that you folks bring and you throw in the hopper. So we get rid of two of those a week. One goes out with approximately ten to twelve to fourteen ton, which is a completely full dumpster. The other one goes out five to seven, which is not a full dumpster, uh, which means you're paying the trucking on one full one and one partly full one. So, to try to cut costs more and try to streamline what we're doing up there, one thing came, one thing we thought about was adding another compactor for the MSW. So you pull up of the first one, then, you know, you get rid of your trash there. The thought is, is to add a second one just beyond the shack, we looked at a number of different places. John was part of the discussion up there, um, to see what we could come up with. Just to backtrack a little bit, at one of our roundtable discussions, I posed the idea of me looking into the cost of another compactor, and, you know, thought it was not a bad idea, so I decided, okay, let's go see what we got for pricing, see if this is even feasible. So I brought in a gentleman from Atlantic Recycling who we use, Todd, can't think of his last name off the top of my head, uh, he's actually the owner of Atlantic Recycling. Uh, he came up, took a look at it, walked around it with John and I. Couple different ways of doing it, I'm not gonna get into all the many degrees of how you could do it, where you could put it. The best part, the best locations. The best part, the best location seemed to be just beyond the shack, right exactly where the demo dumpsters are now. So revamp that area, mirror what we have on the other side, put another compactor in there. We're, we already have a second container from Waste Management, so we don't have to look at renting another container. Unless they decide that, well, you're using it full time, you're gonna rent it, that, that's a minimal cost anyway. Uh, so anyway, he got back to me with some numbers, he has both new and used compactors. A new compactor is in the total, is in the realm of almost thirty two thousand dollars, that's set up installed.
That's a new one?
That's a new one, thirty two, which I didn't print that out until today, cause I had a little printer problem. Uh, so thirty two thousand in round numbers, it's thirty one eight, but thirty two. A used one, completely refurbished by them, set up the same way, is twenty two six. So what I found interesting, they weren't that far apart, ten thousand dollars a pack, roughly. When I was in Rollinsford, we did buy two used, uh, not compacters, balers from them. Uh, support was wonderful, we didn't have, have any issues, so I'm not opposed to buying a used compactor from them. If we could swing a new one, I think that might be the better way, but uh, there's not a lot of moving parts in. You get a ram and you've got a big funnel metal that goes back and forth and squishes it in, other than that, it's a big cage, so. Um, there will be more money on top of that because we get some site work to do and some concrete work to do. Some concrete work to do, some digging, conducting and whatnot, so, uh, plus some electrical, so we need electrician to wire it in. The wiring can come from the shack that's there, that can be done.
It's probably the easiest part, isn't it?
That's probably the easiest part, um.
That service will take both of them.
That, I'm gonna double check that, but they come straight from CMP in the, in the pole.
You'll be running one compact at a time.
Pole's right there, you're running one at a time, yeah, yeah, so what would happen is, you use the one we have now. Come Sunday morning or Saturday afternoon at two o'clock, it's full.
Cone it up.
Yeah, you cone it off, board it off, you move to the next one. That one gets dumped Monday morning, now you're using the secondary one, using that the rest of that day, using it Sunday, you use it at Monday, Wednesday. Uh, come the following Saturday, so Monday, your first one's dumped, so you've got an empty one now. Following Saturday, even if you only use the second one for an hour in your fall, you switch back to the first one. You always have an empty one, all the time, and you're shipping a full container.
You never run out.
And it never run out and you're shipping it once a week, as opposed to twice a week. Uh, shipping that once a week is a savings of upwards of over twenty thousand dollars a year, just in the trucking fees, you're gonna save.
Even if we do like three every two weeks, it's better than two a week.
Yeah, but I don't anticipate you'd have to, I never, uh, the population of Rollinsford and the demographics is very similar to here. I think the population is a little higher, but, cause we don't have the lakes, um, you know, down there. But if you look at it all, it's about the same, I never had to shut down, we always had one empty one, so it always worked. Um, I, like Dave, probably to take a look and give, try to get some ideas on the site work side of it. Um, we probably would be a bid.
Just for budgeting purposes.
That's all, just for budgeting purposes, to see what he thinks.
Get the river going out there.
Yeah, I don't know, no, just for budgeting purposes, cause that side of it would be something we probably should go out to bid on. But we'd have to write up something to bid on, um.
Have we got to come up with a place to put the demo?
Yeah, we can move the demo somewhere, but that's.
I think that could be added into the same thing.
Yeah, my, yeah.
Or when you figure out the site work to do that, you'd have to figure out the site work.
Yep, site work for that.
Or you just move stuff down, probably.
Maybe, but we can't go too far down because we end up at, at the edge of our usable land, because beyond that is a capped, um.
Landfill.
Landfill, then you can't disturb the cap, so, yeah, that's kinda why we're long and narrow and not. You know, we can't use that land behind the, the shack, so. The only other thing you'd have to maybe build would be, I'm gonna say, a small shack, and when I say small, four by four. Something for the operator to stand in, so he can watch the machine.
Do we need a roof?
No, actually, the way, no, the way this was designed, so picture the one we have now coming up out of the ground. This one was designed with steel structure coming up and a top over, a roof over it and a set of doors. So you open the doors and you throw into it that way, the only thing you probably wouldn't be able to do is back a truck into it and dump. Which.
Should be fine.
I think would be fine, cause I see that as a hazard.
Do we do that now?
At the one we have now, yeah, the, the, one of the gentlemen.
The haulers.
One of the haulers that comes in.
So he'd have to, uh.
We shut down, yeah, we shut down the line coming in, they open the gate, he backs in, he dumps.
So he'd have to throw it in from now on?
He'd probably have to throw it in or.
Just in the one, just in the one.
Just in that one, yeah, so, I, it might be able to make bigger enough to back into it, but. But keeping the moisture out of it too, uh, you're keeping the tonnage down, you're not getting water in. The one we got now, you gotta drive in rain, you're getting water in it, no matter how you look at it with that roof, it's wide open on the sides.
It sounds very feasible.
I think it is, I was encouraged when I saw the numbers, cause I didn't have a real clue.
You would think it'd be more.
I'm surprised that they, they haven't made that up.
Yeah, Todd Hager is the guy's name, I've got a pretty good rapport with him, uh, they were actually located three doors down from us in Rollinsford. So I got to know him pretty well.
Does the used one have a warranty?
They all will come with, in Todd's words, how much of a warranty do you want, thirty, sixty, ninety, I'll give you a year. Municipalities he will work with.
Okay, that's awesome.
I had a cylinder down there that was over a year in the used comp, uh, used baler I had, the cylinder sat leaking, he took care of it, yeah, so.
You know, and another, you know, you're talking about the cylinder leaking, you know, if, uh, say, uh, you know, the compactor, the ram blows a seal. Out completely, you're blowing out seal.
Yeah.
You know, you're pretty much.
We're out of, we're out of service up there right now, the way it is.
Yeah.
I say we as if it's my place, it's not, but, I mean, ours as a whole.
We, we would be.
It's down, yeah, the place would be down, you would be closed.
Yeah, totally.
This way it gives you a secondary machine that if you do have a catastrophic failure on one, your other one is still up and running, provided you have an empty container.
Yeah, all I have to do is blow, blow one hydraulic hose.
Right, which, by the way, we do, they did a service on all the machines up there two weeks ago, they shouldn't have said this on our report. And they did find a set of hoses on our compactor right now that need to be replaced, they gotta, it's chafed down to, down to the.
Steel.
Steel, and it's scheduled to be replaced, I think, next week, so.
At least they caught that, it wasn't bad.
Yeah, yeah, it's very bad.
A bunch of different ways.
Yeah, and I did have that happen in Rollinsford, we did blow, we did lose hoes and we switched over, so.
Sounds like a lot of positives.
Yeah, so I think, um, you all are in favor, at least in theory, let's continue working on it and see what we come up with for the rest of the numbers. I mean, I, I wouldn't be surprised if the rest of the numbers are, not half, well, twenty grand maybe, I don't know.
We'll look at it.
Yeah, let's listen safe.
Before we throw any numbers out.
I mean, it's not gonna be cheap, but we're not talking a hundred and a half.
I gotta tell you, that twenty thousand, the annual savings.
Yeah.
That's, that's big.
Yeah.
Cause you, you get through the initial capital.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it sounds like two or three years of savings would pay for that.
Yeah.
And then it's all gravy thereafter.
Yeah, yeah, one of the balers I put in Rollinsford, we were switching over how we were handling, uh, the recycling. We went from what the gentleman came in here and talked about from EcoMaine, the single stream, we went from that to single source recycling at the site. And I put a baler in to do aluminum and plastic and I figured a two-year payback, it was about eighteen months to pay back, just in the savings. Uh, from what we made off the project.
So do you wanna make a motion to look into this, that we're talking about?
Probably not, oh yeah, let's, yeah, so I guess I'll make a motion that we formally look into. Adding a second compactor at the transfer station, that's probably all you need in the motion right now.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
And, uh, our superintendent has seen these numbers and whatnot, he's aware, so, yep.
Thank you for looking at that and all the work.
I actually enjoy it, this is, to me, that's fun.
I'm gonna start a clock about a couple of weeks ago, it's like.
Yeah.
So now we're gonna move on to our September thirtieth special election warrant signing.
Tom has the completed warrant with all the recommendations, but the board of finance chair did look at it. Wanna just read the opening at least, make sure that's right?
I'm gonna read the whole thing, huh?
Just the opening, yeah, that's the.
In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn. The inhabitants of said town of Acton qualified to vote in town affairs to assemble at the Acton Town Hall. Thirty-five H. Road, Acton, Maine, on Tuesday, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, at eight AM in the morning to vote on the following, following articles. First article is to choose a moderator, second idol is to authorize the, uh, use of unassigned fund balance for a new ambulance, six hundred fifty-six thousand. Third article is to authorize twenty-two thousand, again from unassigned fund balance, for the purchase of a command vehicle. Fourth article is, uh, to expand it to thirty-five thousand from unexpended fund balance for the purchase of a municipal vehicle. And the fifth article is the, uh, sixty-five thousand, nine thirty-eight from unassigned fund balance to fulfill the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six winter snowing. Winter plowing contract. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
And I just wanna, we're signing, thank our town administrator for coordinating and getting everything pulled to meet these deadlines, I know it was not easy, so thank you for. The work that you did to make sure that we could sign this today and be ready for the September 30th election, and that was a lot of work.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, twice, sometimes even twice.
Um, I will, at this time, entertain a motion. Oh, do we wanna move, are we gonna have a?
Decision.
Decision, do we wanna?
I'll, I'll make a motion, we go into executive session.
Yeah.
I think you wanted a public comment.
That's what that, oh, that's good.
I'm sorry.
Um, so then do we wanna, uh, do public comment, does, is there any public comment before we move into executive session? Okay.
Once, boys.
So, okay, um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, MRSA four oh five six eight one dash, oh, it's supposed to be dash one, personnel.
Second.
All in favor? I'll, I'll just make a motion.
Make a motion, we can move into executive session at seven thirty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll just make another motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.